Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Please stand. Before we say the prayers, let's not forget to say some prayers for the officers in Dallas, and also to bring peace to this country. I think at one time we're going, we're getting too violent and we need to bring some peace. So please honor us, honor the court with about thirty minutes, thirty seconds of silence, please. Pre-choir, just a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have the approval of the minutes.
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion to table? There's a second meeting. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody, five zero. We have only one citizen's comment, Rhonda Harwood. She wants to speak on item sixteen. Go ahead, Ms. Harwood.
Judge, never mind. I'll talk to you later.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we're going to have the presentation of the Certificus of Successful Completion of Well-Land Firefighting Training to Rope and Bridge Crews from Precinct Three and the Valverde Fire Rescue Department's presentation to be made by the county judge and Commissioner. Name, command?
Yes.
Or in the way? On the tongue? And then on the other?
Yeah, let me get you better, kind of the...
How about if they stood in front of that deal there and you take a picture in the front, right in front of them?
Actually, the back there is better.
They move. Yeah, we'll move.
Yeah, can you guys just kind of come around the...
Yeah, that way it'll be a lot better. You won't be all squished in that way.
I'll be in the way.
No, you're good.
I'm all right, right?
Yeah, just come up right here. I have another station.
Good.
Act like you all like each other.
Okay, great. If I can kind of get you to squish in just a little bit. All right, everybody look up here. Big smile. One more time. Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations. Here we also have the fire department. Yeah, we also have the... From the... Who's that? What's that? And the deer? And I'll read.
Yeah, I am.
She's high, but she's coming up here.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, we also need to congratulate Precinct Two people that certified and get them their certificates of security. Okay, this is item number seven, seeking approval and signature on an order to supply or services against intergovernmental agreement, IGA, for detention services between Valverde County and the U.S. Marshals Service.
Good morning, I'm Agent Solis. I'm a special operations supervisor with the Del Rio Sector Border Patrol. I'm filling in for Doug Lenzel, who is the administrator of the intergovernment agreement between the Border Patrol and Geo Detention Center for Detention. What you see before you, that document, is actually an amendment to a twenty-eight-page intergovernment agreement. Right now, at this time, when we pay for detention services at Geo Valverde, we submit a voucher and we have to pay through a check. Due to government regulations, we can only pay up to $3,000. So if the detention costs are above $3,000, we end up cutting two or three checks. This is a long process. And what this amendment does is create an electronic way of paying that bill and hopefully shortens the way Geo gets paid. Another thing that we've added to the contract of this amendment is guard services through the use of Geo. What happens if we had a prisoner in custody that needs to go to the hospital and we need to guard them? It takes for the government policies, two agents to guard that person. But this amendment allows us to use two Geo guards. So we still have those two personnel out in the field doing their jobs, patrolling, and we have those Geo guards getting paid by us through this contract so that they can take our place at the hospital. And that basically is the gist of this amendment.
I've got a couple of questions, Judge. Go ahead. On the guards, it also mentions transport. Is this when they're being transported to prison or...
So the transporting, if we ever have to have a prisoner transported back and forth from the hospital, we would pay those guards the transportation mileage. Sometimes they, because of, due to the severity of the injury the agent might have, and many times when we catch somebody or apprehend someone, they're suffering from heat exhaustion, heat stroke, or even dehydrating, they may need advanced medical care. So they would do the transport service for us to a hospital in San Antonio and we would pay them by the mileage.
So the transport and the guard is the same rate, eighteen seventy-five per hour?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry. We are currently working with Geo in San Antonio as well so that they would not have to do that, but that's not been completed yet.
Okay. On the fifty-six dollars per day, that's what the county rate is, right?
Yeah, I don't know what the county...
Sure. And does the, the people that are in jail for the federal through this contract, does that count against the counties? A lot of slots for the fifty-six dollars per day?
No.
It does not? Okay. Motion to accept and authorize the judge to sign. Okay, there's some motions. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I really appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, next we have presentation of New Horizons Women Children's Center Financial and Activity Report for April, May, June. Is that here, sir? Oh, she's here. Come back.
Morning.
Morning.
I don't see anything on the wall. Okay, let me pass the... Okay, thank you. Thank you. How are you doing? How are you doing?
I'm fine.
Of course you don't run out of coffee.
Let me see if I can...
No more coffee. No more coffee.
Thank you. Would you like to give a little circle? And, of course, they have the... Okay, you can find in the financial also attached, two of the stories for two of the ladies we have right now. We have five families at the shelter. And made children. The, as you can see, the financial report keeps ending up in negative. That's one of the challenges we have. It is pretty difficult to handle a shelter thirty, I mean, twenty-four-seven and three-hundred-and-fifty five days a year.
You're not able to find grants or anything else?
Right now, we talked to the HHTC last week and they say, yes, the three point eight million dollars that they released into Texas is out there, but they haven't been able to release any if it starts. So probably the competition is going to be open next year. What we're going to need is for people to press on that and to help us out to, for them to release that money.
How long are you going to be able to continue to operate at a deficit before you have to close?
We wouldn't like to because we know it's needed. I mean, we're helping, we're really helping in there.
Oh, I mean, I agree, you're helping, but how much longer can you afford to lose that kind of money?
Probably next year we'll see if they release that money. We're hoping, I mean, we're hoping that they release the three point eight. Whenever we have that, the HHTC funding is not going to be a problem.
The thirteen thousand, though, when you get your reimbursement, you pay yourself back.
Yes.
Are you, are you with the hundred and thirty thousand dollars? Are you able to do it with the hundred and thirty thousand or we're just staying behind?
With the, we're staying behind, behind. I mean, we put that money...
You put money in, then you get caught up, and you put money in.
Yes.
But at the end, but at the end of a fiscal year, at the end of a calendar year, whatever way y'all work it, I mean, what's your total cost for the year to run that facility?
I don't know. I don't know. Probably it's more or less one thousand and five hundred every month that we're cutting and cutting and cutting. The thing is that Mr. Sotolano, how he's managing to get that into the balance of the county. But what we know is that we're paying for the basics of, for the people that isn't there. And of course, the payroll is always on tax. We don't have a problem with that. If you have any other questions?
Any other question, please?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, for item number nine, discuss possible action regarding possible abandonment property located in the storage at the library and possible actions they're asking. Do you have this one? This Monday?
The property y'all want to get rid of, the abandoned property?
I, I mean, I'm kind of at odds. I don't really know what exactly we want to do with it. I mean, some of the pieces I think would be interesting to hold on to, maybe display in the new building and see what we can figure out about them. I don't, you know, this was just sprung recently.
Do you have an inventory, what's there?
The sheriff's office came and did that. And I basically handed it over to them and they put their lock on it, so...
This is property we found, we didn't know we had. We don't know where it came from.
Yeah, it was mentioned to me by my maintenance man. He said, you know, we've got some silver, it's stored in that cabinet. And of course, I think that's covering all kinds of stuff, so this is just another, another day, really. So, yeah, I mean, there's some interesting stuff. I'm not really sure.
But we're not knowing where it came from?
There's some speculation that it may have belonged to the lady on the property adjacent over the now building. But, no, no one really is completely sure. There's one jewelry box has the lady's name on it. So, yeah, I'm not real sure about that.
Why would we want to keep it? You said that it would be nice to...
Well, there were some interesting artifacts that looked like...
What I'm saying, like there's pictures in there, necklaces, jewelry.
Oh, yeah.
Forks, knives, stuff like that.
Right, I don't know. Maybe that silverware has been used for events, hosting events at the library. I just don't really know.
How do we go about getting rid of it if we don't know where it came from?
Well, I think that what Ms. Monday says is probably the first place, which is to talk to the heirs of the people that own the house. Because that's, you know, if we didn't know who the owners were, then we'd probably have to, you know, sell it at auction. But I think we need to reach out to them first.
Yeah, but how do you know? I mean, but you're going to reach out to them, you don't even know if it came from the house. She doesn't know that it came from the house.
I was looking at displaying and seeing if people came to us with any information about it.
I think we need to first identify where it came from.
That's our duty.
We need to contact the previous librarians. I think, unless three or four, they're still in Del Rio. What...
I think we've got to notify the people, the community, by using News Herald and see if anybody claims that property, you know, give it a six months, a year deadline, and then maybe we can figure something.
Do you have something to say, sir? Go ahead.
Thank you, Judge. The sheriff's office did an inventory of the property that was there, and it is our belief that that property comes from the Greenwood Estate, the elderly ladies that owned the house next door. And we believe that it was probably their intent to have that, donate that stuff to the library to have it displayed. There's one heir that has not been located yet, but is believed to be living in the Bernie area. Some of, some of that stuff is pretty neat stuff, and actually, one of my employees recalls one of those pocket watches that is belonging to Pancho Villa. So there's stuff there that's old stuff that...
So you've already, you've already looked into it, or you've already done a lot of the research there?
We've done some research, but there's one heir left. But we believe that the intent was from the ladies who had to have it displayed. The sheriff's office, there's baptismal garments in that, in those items there, flatware, silverware, all kinds of stuff. So that is our belief at this point in time.
Have you visited with Sammy yet, maybe? Oscar? Big Oscar?
No, have not.
I mean, because, I mean, he's part of the ones that tore down some of that building and stuff, right? Or no?
Yeah, they were the ones.
Right, yeah. I mean, he would have, he would, might have a little bit of information.
At the time that that happened, we were not notified that there was anything like that. I think that happened way before. That house was torn down, and like I was saying a while ago, I think we need to identify where it came from and what the intent was. I don't think that if they wanted us to sell the material that they would have given to us for us to sell, they probably would have sold it themselves and then made a donation to the library.
Yeah, we would only sell it if it was an unknown, we couldn't determine who the owner was.
Right, and I think that displaying it properly would be a good reason.
Ms. Monday, would you have a problem? Would you have a problem, take it together with the sheriff, see if you could contact the heir of that property and see?
We'll do it.
Okay?
Where it's at, I mean, now that we know that there's a lot of important stuff, valuable stuff in there, where it's at, where it's located, is it going to be safe there?
It'll be safe and secure. We have the R-lock on it, and the only key that's outside is being held by our evidence technique.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next, we have discussed possible action regarding Arlington Higher Education Finance Corporation, governing bonds, series twenty sixteen, and authorizing the county judge to sign the certificate for the county judge of Valverde County after the public hearing is held and bearing no objections at said hearing.
What is this, yeah?
Premier, premier high school is going out for a bond. It was, this is a response to a letter from Andrews and Gert, a law firm in Easton, directed to the county judge. Under the Internal Revenue Code, the, the head of the highest jurisdiction party in the area has to basically sign a certificate. There's going to be a public hearing later on in July. It's, it's right by, right out of the Internal Revenue Code, it's required for them to secure the bond. Doesn't, the county is not allowed...
We're not bound in any...
In any way, it's not bound in any way. The county is not ensuring it in any way. It just requires the judge to sign after the public hearing itself.
So can we bring it back after the public hearing, or...
You can bring it back after the public hearing, or you can authorize the judge. Obviously, time is of the essence for them.
I'll make a motion to approve, authorize the judge to sign after the public hearing.
Just so long, yeah, just so long as there are no objections at the public hearing. That's why I was worried about that.
You want to, you want to put that in your motion, as long as there are no obligations, or no matter what, he can sign?
Objections? I mean, I don't know what we do. If there's objections, if there's objections at the public hearing, he doesn't sign it?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to say as long as there's no objections at the public hearing.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nobody, five zero. Item eleven, discuss possible action on supporting effort to recognize justice and peace. Felix Barrera, senior. Judge, this was brought to the court last month during citizen's comments. I believe Mr. Julio Flores came before the court and asked for the, the court's support in naming some property, asked of the judge there around the Plaza Brown. That is not in our jurisdiction. However, I think it would be a good idea for the court to send a letter of support saying that we are in favor of the city, so decides to do this, that we would, we would be in support. Due to the many years that Judge Barrera served our county and our community and very well respected in the Safalipa community, so I will make a motion that we send a letter of support, the judge sent a letter of support to the city of Del Rio, saying that we, we are behind the effort to, to do this.
Second.
There's a motion. And the sixth, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, item twelve, discuss possible action on policy manual change to amend vacation policy. Judge, I have, why did they come up and address the court? We were advised by the county attorney's office that there was, it could be some conflict or misunderstanding in the way our current policy on vacation is written, so we, the policy committee got together and is recommending this change. Let me tell you, you want to go ahead and...
Currently, the way the policy is written, after six months...
What page?
That's the section that we submit to the court. In the policy, after an employee has been employed six months, you're allowed to take time off once it's earned and accrued and put into the system for you to use. Thereafter, you're not able to see or use and leave until the first year of employment. And the same would apply thereafter. What we're recommending is that an employee be able to use the earned time off on a monthly basis.
And one of the issues is that the, the policy is kind of contradictory. It doesn't, it doesn't say what Ms. Barrera's saying.
The, the change as proposed, all of you should have a copy. It says upon completion of the six months of employment, an employee will be eligible to begin using his or her earned or accrued vacation time on a monthly basis. Mexican carryover from previous year is forty hours. So right now, the way it reads, you can take your, one week that you accrue after six months, and then at the end of the first year, you can take either the one week or the two weeks that you have accrued. After that, you're not eligible to take vacation again for a full year, even though the policy is that you accrue one, basically one day per month. So if you're accruing it and it's, it's your earned vacation, then you should be able to use it at your discretion and of course, with the approval of either the elected official or the office manager. And this is all we're doing, we're making it to where if an employee has accrued vacation, earned vacation, they can go ahead and use it when they, when they want to use it, of course, with the authorization of their immediate supervisor.
Oh, you're going to make a motion and...
I will show a move that we accept the change.
Second. Any more discussion, questions?
I got one question or something else, but go ahead, come.
How does that affect employees that leave? Does it affect them at all?
No. We discussed that at our meeting, and employees that leave have to have been here the full year before they are able to get paid for their vacation.
One question, I guess you can probably answer it better. We have a no weapons policy. Is it in compliance?
I think so, yes.
We have the authority to ban our employees from carrying guns on premises.
Our employees, but not the...
What about the one that have a concealed handgun permit or anything like that?
Then you need to address that in the policy.
It's not in, it doesn't address the concealed handgun license.
That's correct.
And then we have some judges that do carry on the premises. We probably need to relook at them to see if it's in compliance.
And I believe we addressed it, Commissioner, when the law came into effect, but we were going to do, the committee was going to do some more research into it based on what the county was going to require. I know the sheriff had been working on it at the time.
I just don't know if we have the authority to ban them from carrying a weapon in our hands.
Call the question, Judge. Go ahead. Call the question. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody, five zero. Item eleven, discuss possible action on supporting effort to recognize justice and peace. Felix Barrera, senior. Judge, this was brought to the court last month during citizen's comments. I believe Mr. Julio Flores came before the court and asked for the, the court's support in naming some property, asked of the judge there around the Plaza Brown. That is not in our jurisdiction. However, I think it would be a good idea for the court to send a letter of support saying that we are in favor of the city, so decides to do this, that we would, we would be in support. Due to the many years that Judge Barrera served our county and our community and very well respected in the Safalipa community, so I will make a motion that we send a letter of support, the judge sent a letter of support to the city of Del Rio, saying that we, we are behind the effort to, to do this.
Second.
There's a motion. And the sixth, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, item twelve, discuss possible action on policy manual change to amend vacation policy. Judge, why did they come up and address the court? We were advised by the county attorney's office that there was, it could be some conflict or misunderstanding in the way our current policy on vacation is written, so we, the policy committee got together and is recommending this change. Let me tell you, you want to go ahead and...
Currently, the way the policy is written, after six months...
What page?
That's the section that we submit to the court. In the policy, after an employee has been employed six months, you're allowed to take time off once it's earned and accrued and put into the system for you to use. Thereafter, you're not able to see or use and leave until the first year of employment. And the same would apply thereafter. What we're recommending is that an employee be able to use the earned time off on a monthly basis.
And one of the issues is that the, the policy is kind of contradictory. It doesn't, it doesn't say what Ms. Barrera's saying.
The, the change as proposed, all of you should have a copy. It says upon completion of the six months of employment, an employee will be eligible to begin using his or her earned or accrued vacation time on a monthly basis. Mexican carryover from previous year is forty hours. So right now, the way it reads, you can take your, one week that you accrue after six months, and then at the end of the first year, you can take either the one week or the two weeks that you have accrued. After that, you're not eligible to take vacation again for a full year, even though the policy is that you accrue one, basically one day per month. So if you're accruing it and it's, it's your earned vacation, then you should be able to use it at your discretion and of course, with the approval of either the elected official or the office manager. And this is all we're doing, we're making it to where if an employee has accrued vacation, earned vacation, they can go ahead and use it when they, when they want to use it, of course, with the authorization of their immediate supervisor.
Oh, you're going to make a motion and...
I will show a move that we accept the change.
Second. Any more discussion, questions?
I got one question or something else, but go ahead, come.
How does that affect employees that leave? Does it affect them at all?
No. We discussed that at our meeting, and employees that leave have to have been here the full year before they are able to get paid for their vacation.
One question, I guess you can probably answer it better. We have a no weapons policy. Is it in compliance?
I think so, yes.
We have the authority to ban our employees from carrying guns on premises.
Our employees, but not the...
What about the one that have a concealed handgun permit or anything like that?
Then you need to address that in the policy.
It's not in, it doesn't address the concealed handgun license.
That's correct.
And then we have some judges that do carry on the premises. We probably need to relook at them to see if it's in compliance.
And I believe we addressed it, Commissioner, when the law came into effect, but we were going to do, the committee was going to do some more research into it based on what the county was going to require. I know the sheriff had been working on it at the time.
I just don't know if we have the authority to ban them from carrying a weapon in our hands.
Call the question, Judge. Go ahead. Call the question. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody, five zero. Item eleven, discuss possible action on supporting effort to recognize justice and peace. Felix Barrera, senior. Judge, this was brought to the court last month during citizen's comments. I believe Mr. Julio Flores came before the court and asked for the, the court's support in naming some property, asked of the judge there around the Plaza Brown. That is not in our jurisdiction. However, I think it would be a good idea for the court to send a letter of support saying that we are in favor of the city, so decides to do this, that we would, we would be in support. Due to the many years that Judge Barrera served our county and our community and very well respected in the Safalipa community, so I will make a motion that we send a letter of support, the judge sent a letter of support to the city of Del Rio, saying that we, we are behind the effort to, to do this.
Second.
There's a motion. And the sixth, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, item twelve, discuss possible action on policy manual change to amend vacation policy. Judge, why did they come up and address the court? We were advised by the county attorney's office that there was, it could be some conflict or misunderstanding in the way our current policy on vacation is written, so we, the policy committee got together and is recommending this change. Let me tell you, you want to go ahead and...
Currently, the way the policy is written, after six months...
What page?
That's the section that we submit to the court. In the policy, after an employee has been employed six months, you're allowed to take time off once it's earned and accrued and put into the system for you to use. Thereafter, you're not able to see or use and leave until the first year of employment. And the same would apply thereafter. What we're recommending is that an employee be able to use the earned time off on a monthly basis.[1030.12]
In that's, in, in those items there, uh, flatware, silverware, all kinds of stuff. So, that is our belief at this point in time, uh...
Have you visited with Sonny yet, maybe? Oscar? Big Oscar?
No, have not.
I mean, because, I mean, he's part of the ones that tore down some of that building and stuff, right? Or no?
Yeah, they were, they were the ones, yeah.
Right, yeah. I mean, he would, he would have, he would, might have a little bit of information.
At, at the time that that happened, we were not notified that there was anything like that. I think that happened way before.
Well, yeah.
How it was torn down and, uh, like I was saying a while ago, I think we need to identify where it came from and what the intent was. I don't think that, uh, if they wanted us to sell the material that they would have given to us for us to sell, they probably would have sold it themselves and then made a donation to the library.
Yeah, we would only sell it if it was an unknown, we couldn't determine who the owner was.
Right, and, uh, again, I think that, uh, displaying it properly would be a, a good reason.
Ms., Ms. Monday, would you have a problem? Would you have a problem, take together with the sheriff, see if you could, uh, contact the, the area that property and see?
We'll do it.
Okay?
Where, where it's at? I mean, now that, we know that there are a lot of important stuff, there's valuable stuff in it, where it's at? Where, where it's located, is it going to be safe there?
It'll be safe and secure, uh, we have the, uh, R-lock on it, and the only key that's outside is, uh, is being held by our evidence technique.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we had discussed possible action regarding Arlington Higher Education Finance Corporation, revenue bonds, series 2016, eight, and authorizing the county judge to sign the certificate for the county judge, uh, judge of the County, after the press is, public hearing is held and bearing no objections at said hearing.
What is this, yeah?
Premier, premier high school is going out for a bond, um, it was, it's, this is a response to a letter from Andrews and Gert, uh, law firm in Easton, directed to the county judge. Under the Internal Revenue Code, the, 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 the head of the highest jurisdictional party in the area has to, uh, basically sign, uh, a, a certificate. Uh, there's going to be a public hearing later on in July. It's, uh, it's right by, right out of the, the Internal Revenue Code, it's required for them to, to secure the bond. Doesn't, the county is not allowed, in, in any way, it's not bound in any way, the county is not insuring it in any way, uh, it just requires, uh, the judge to sign after the public hearing itself.
So, can we bring it back after the public hearing, or?
You can bring it back after the public hearing, or you can, uh, authorize the judge, as obviously time is of the essence for them.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, authorize the judge to sign after the public hearing.
Yeah, just so long as there are no objections at the public hearing, that's why I was worried about that one.
You wanna, you wanna put that in your motion, as long as there are no obligations, or, or no matter what, he can sign? Objections?
I mean, I don't know what we do, if there's objections?
David, David.
If, if there's objections at the public hearing, he doesn't sign it?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to say as long as there's no objections at the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye. All those opposed? Nobody, five zero. Item 11, discuss possible action on support and effort to recognize justice in peace, Felix Barra de Sime.
Judge, this was brought to the court last month, uh, during citizens' comments, I believe Mr. Julio Flores came before the court and asked for the, uh, the court's support in naming some property, asked of the judge, uh, there at, around the Plaza Brown. Uh, that is not in our jurisdiction, however, I, I think it would be a good idea for the court to, um, send a letter of support, saying that we are, uh, in favor of the city, so decides to do this, that, that we would, we would be in support, uh, due to the many years that, that Judge Barra de Sime served our county and our community, and, um, very well respected in the, in the Safalipa community. So, uh, I will make a motion that we send a letter of support, the judge sent a letter of support to the city of Del Rio, saying that we, uh, we are behind the effort to, to do this.
Second.
There's a motion. And second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Next, item 12, discuss possible action on policy manual change to amend vacation policy.
Judge, uh, I have, what did they come up with? When I address the court, uh, we were advised by the county attorney's office that, uh, there was, there could be some conflict, uh, or misunderstandings with the way our current, uh, policy on vacation is written, so we, the policy committee got together and is recommending this change. Let me tell you, you want to go ahead and, uh?
Currently, the way the policy is written, after six months of employment, check.
What page?
That's the page.
Okay.
There, that's the section that we submitted to the court. Um, in the policy, after an employee has been employed six months, you're allowed to take time off once it's earned and accrued and put into the system for you to use. Thereafter, you're not able to see or use and leave until the first year of employment, um, and the same would apply thereafter. What we're recommending is that an employee be able to use the earned time off on a monthly basis.
And one of the issues is that the, uh, the policy is kind of contradictory, it doesn't, it doesn't say what Mr. Barra de Sime.
The, uh, the change as proposed, uh, all of you should have a copy, it says upon completion of the six months of employment, an employee will be eligible to begin using his or her earned or accrued vacation time on a monthly basis. Uh, Mexican carryover from previous year is forty hours. So, right now, the way it reads, you can take your, uh, one week that you accrue after six months, and then at the end of the first year, you can take either the one week or the two weeks that you have accrued. After that, you're not eligible to take vacation again for a full year, even though the policy is that you accrue one, basically one day per month. So, if you're accruing it, and it's, it's your earned vacation, then you should be able to use it, uh, at, at your discretion, and of course, with the, uh, approval of either the elected official or the office manager. And, and this is all we're doing, we're making it to where if an employee has accrued vacation, earned vacation, they can go ahead and use it, uh, when they, when they want to use it, uh, of course, with the authorization of their immediate supervisor.
Oh, you're going to make a motion and?
I'll, I'll show move that we accept the change.
Second, any more discussion, questions?
I got one question or something else, but go ahead, come.
How does that affect employees that leave? Does it affect them at all?
No, uh, we discussed that, uh, at our meeting, and employees that leave have to have been here the full year before they are able to, uh, get paid for their vacation.
One question, I guess you can probably answer it better. We have a no weapons policy. Is it in compliance?
I think so, yes.
We have the authority to ban our employees from carrying guns on premises.
Our employees, but, but not the public?
What about the one that have a concealed handgun permit or anything like that?
Then you need to address that in the policy.
It's not in, it doesn't address the concealed handgun license.
It's not.
And then we have some judges that do carry on the premises. We probably need to relook at them, to see if it's in compliance.
And I believe we addressed it, Commissioner, when the law came into effect, but we were going to do, the committee was going to do some more research into it, based on what the county was going to require. Uh, I know the sheriff had been working on it at the time.
I just don't know if we have the authority to ban them from carrying a weapon or anything.
Call the question, Judge?
Go ahead.
Call the question. Yeah. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Five zero. All right, next, discuss possible action on approval and invoice of, for B and S services for the amount of $232.60 due to no purchase order.
Okay, those, uh, next two items that I did not put on the agenda, I don't know they're under my name, uh, but there is an invoice for that, it's, uh, invoice number 16 dash 24539, and it's an ongoing invoice. Why, uh, they're saying there is no invoice, I don't know.
You want to make a motion to pay it, though?
Yeah. Well, we shouldn't need a motion, if there's an invoice, it makes sense, I've already wrote it.
An invoice or a purchase order?
I'm sorry?
An invoice or a purchase order?
There's a, there's a, I'm sorry, a purchase order and an invoice.
Okay.
Uh, we have, but purchase order number is 46015.
Okay.
How does that handle, why would, why would it show up as a no purchase?
Because they bill us every month, Mr. Musquies.
Yes.
And, and what this is, is a porta potty for the workers that are working on the water line, and we, as they're moving along, they're, they're moving the porta potty with them, so they won't have to come all the way to the warehouse to, uh, to use the restroom. So, uh, every month, they renew the rental.
But why does it reflect as having no purchase order?
I do not have the slightest idea. Nobody called me on it. You figure they would have called and, and asked either myself or Mr. Musquies. I think, uh, Frank is the one to send this up, he was in the previous order.
Mr. Musquies, do you know?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
So, you think there is a purchase order?
No, I know there is a purchase order, I don't think there is.
Okay.
So, we, we shouldn't? You know there is a purchase order?
I know there is a purchase order, but you have to?
What's problematic is that, in the event they find out that something's wrong with the purchase order, and you don't, you know, you lose that ability to pay, then you haven't had the court's authority, so I would just do it.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's been paid for the last six months, I don't know why we changed this.
You don't make a motion to pay it?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to pay it, and that we continue using the same purchase order.
Is, are both, uh, items 13 and 14, or just?
No, just that one.
Okay. There's a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Nobody?
Commissioner, I'm on, what, what, you, you have the number of the purchase order?
Yes, ma'am.
What is that?
Four, six, zero, one, five.
Okay. Okay, next, item 14, discuss possible action approving an over, uh, overage of $30.42 on an invoice from Moody Gardens Hotel.
Actually, this overage is on the part of the hotel, there's a, uh, fee for $10.14, I believe it's a local revenue tax that the Moody Gardens has, and, uh, that it was not reflected in the original, uh, invoice, well, original purchase order that we had submitted, so it's, uh, an additional $30.42 that was charged on this bill, we're not making a motion to pay it.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody?
Okay, a question. So, if you have a purchase order and it's approved?
Yes.
Um, and then you go out of town, and you never know what the cost is going to be, what they're going to add on?
Right.
If it's, if it's a legitimate charge, then it doesn't get paid?
Frank, can you?
Well, apparently that's what they told me, that's why you send it over here.
We need to address in our purch, in our purchasing policy.
We, we try real hard to make sure that we have all the charges when we do the purchase order, but, I mean, there is sometimes when you come back, there's stuff on there that, that you didn't know about, or, or they didn't tell you.
But you didn't?
Like that right there, and, and when you get back, usually what has been the process is that you were able to write another purchase order at that time to take care of it, and now that's not happening like that.
It, it, it used to, they used to pay it without any problem if there was a purchase order, but now seems to be a problem, and they send it to us to get approved every month.
I got one back, it was Friday, it's too late for the agenda, that I'll have to bring up during bills, but it was on a shipping deal, it wasn't part of the original, it was $23 difference, and so.
But there is a way that, because I called Tyler myself, and there's a way that you can go and adjust the total, the only one that can do that is Mr. Musquies.
No, there, there is, and, and before, even before Tyler, uh, if it went over, you would get the phone call and say, look, you wrote a purchase request for 200, it's 215 dollars, can you come in and write another purchase request for the overage? And it would be taken care of, because, I mean, as, as hard as you plan and ask what it's going to cost, you know, sometimes it, it just goes over.
So, so this is the typical?
But now that process is no longer there.
It's not your typical no purchase order, it's just?
No, it's, it's just, it's over, I mean, we do a, I mean, and, we do a deal with, with it, we're having a lot of AC repair right now, so, I mean, I'm writing purchase request orders that are really high, because I don't know what it's going to cost, and even some of the ones that I thought were high, they've gone over. And then, the last three months of you, I mean, I was on the list the last, the last three months, because my, that I didn't have a purchase, purchase request order number, or it'd gone over, but you can't, I mean, as hard as you try to, to guess what it's going to cost, you, you just can't do it. And on the motel building like this, if we don't, if you call and you ask for a total bill, and they send you a copy, but they didn't put that on there, I mean, you wrote a purchase request order number, or, wrote a purchase request order for the amount that you were told, but, I mean, you know, this is beyond our control.
Is there a way to correct that, Mr. Musquies? Because we have POs where we, we have a blanket PO that it, we did it for over, but it was way lower, is there a way that we can get like a credit for however much? Because it doesn't appear on our budget, because I've called Tyler about that.
Well, it should credit back to your budget.
But it doesn't.
It's supposed to.
If you ask to be closed out.
For that to be closed, it really doesn't matter. So, you have to maintain your, your, your balances and your, your purchase order status on a monthly basis.
It doesn't automatically, when we were told at the beginning of Tyler, when, when we went in to do Tyler, we were told that if you did a purchase request for, blanket PO for $500, then it would, you would be crediting back. That doesn't happen unless the department goes in and asks for that PO to be closed out, uh, you know, but that wasn't, we were told at the very, very beginning. And therefore, I mean, I had one account that had $101,000, my operating, I had 43,000, $4,300 in it two months ago, and I had to go back and close out a bunch of accounts. At the beginning of all this, we were told that, that they would basically, at the end of the month, they would close out, that money would go back in, it didn't happen, you had to go back in there and manage it.
They, they really created more work, and, uh, what Commissioner Owens said a while ago, in cases such as Commissioner Nedleton, where the shipping charge was not included in the PO, uh, overage of the hotel or whatever, uh, it used to be taken care of with a phone call. Auditor's office will pay, will call and say, you know, that this happened, can you come in and fix? Sure. But now, they're making it come through the court.
We need to readdress it in the personnel policy.
Would it call to Mr. Musquies' help, or that doesn't change anything?
If the auditor would call me when they get that invoice and say, there's an incidental charge of $10, I'm just a purchase order, I can do it immediately, and this would be eliminated, but it, it's, it's their fault.
Well, actually, it's the court's fault.
Maybe we change the policy then, maybe.
Okay.
There's really no quality to that.
We need to address it.
All right, let's go to item 15, discuss possible action on lease agreement between Beverly County and Del Rio, four by four mud racing again.
Did you vote?
Yeah, we did.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion, uh, turn her into a lease with the four by four mud racing, and have to give the judge authority to sign.
I'll second, why are we only charging 500?
Because I come before the court to, uh, we did not have a rate for just to infill all the uses of dirt, and, and I came before the court, and the court allowed to go 500 or whatever, just for the inside.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. One of the things also, commissioners, that they do is they pay for an individual to be there, uh, while, for, to put water in the, you know, and they pay for the water and everything like that, other than, other than the rental.
Okay. Five zero. All right, next, this is item 16, discuss possible action in paying out of cycle contractors' material as needed to complete the animal control facility.
We started the, the pad for the animal control, and we're getting bids right now for an individual to throw the slab, and then another individual to lay the block, but I'd like to have permission to, uh, pay them out of cycle, that way we can pay them either on a weekly or bi-weekly basis.
Were we building, sir? Were we building this?
There on, on Tierra Blanca, remember?
Oh.
Out on precinct two?
Oh, yeah.
Behind, uh, where the Batmobile is located.
Okay.
And the, the facility's a 25 by 85 foot facility, it has, uh, 10, uh, 10 stalls to house dogs, and then two stalls to house dogs that have been quarantined, and then there's going to be an office, a restroom, and, uh, another room inside the 25 by 85 facility per field and stuff like that, and then an area for cats.
Okay, we have a motion?
Motion.
I made a motion.
Motion, you a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Nobody? Item 17, discuss possible action in use of a cough use for the ABO adult kids to fall.
We had, uh, I didn't, I didn't know what to do with this, so I brought it to the court. We have a lot of individuals using the fields down in Alcoa, or down on Fronttera Road, I mean, all four fields, we have baseball, we have softball, we have a kickball team, uh, and this team here, uh, it, it says league, but they're going to just be holding practices on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They'd asked me if they could use the facility, and I told them since it was, uh, I, I need to bring it before the court. I don't think there's going to be an issue, because it is on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and the time that they're going to be using it, uh, there's nobody else using the field, but I just wanted to?
They're going to meet the same requirements as everybody else that uses it, but they have to have insurance, a lease and insurance and all that.
Well, the, the problem that we're having now is that the individuals that are using the fields right now don't have insurance, it's because they're public fields, I mean, right now you have battling teams.
Yeah, I know, there was a, there was a tournament this weekend.
Uh, you know, they are public fields, and, and the only, you know, I don't know how to keep them out. If, if they're going to?
My only problem using it, it's just, it's an adult league, and if somebody gets hurt, I don't want us to be stuck liable for it, as long as they figure out a way to keep us from being liable.
Do we have a, would we, I guess my question would be, since it is a public field, can we keep them off of? I mean, it's a public area, it's like a park.
Do you have, do you have rules?
I'm not asking to keep them off, I just want to make sure, I, I know we require some of the others to carry?
No, we required, when they?
We, we lease it to them for a dollar, and then they have to carry an insurance to?
What we've done also?
The fields?
Huh? We, we've charged, the leagues, we've charged a dollar, and they, and they?
They require they have insurance.
And they even hold, they even, they even put us as additional insurer and everything, uh, if there's tournaments, and, and I think that's what we've done in the past, is when there's been tournaments, we've asked them to provide us with something. Uh, these are just going to be practicing.
But how do you schedule those practices?
We, we have it scheduled, and they call us, and, and we start putting them in, in order, uh, with a date and the time. We actually have some days that you'll have two or three teams, uh, practice.
And do they provide insur, proof of insurance?
No.
Okay, well, you need to treat them the way you treat everybody else.
Can we create a whole harmless agreement that they would sign?
We can create it.
That work?
Well, the thing is that not everyone that uses the fields comes through the court to use.
The majority, the majority of the people that are using those fields, and I would say, I would almost bet it's 100% on the fields, because there's so many teams using it, that, that they're actually coming to the, they're actually coming to the fairgrounds and making the phone call to get its time set up.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we have, like, two, or, or three softball teams, uh, four baseball teams, and the kickball team, uh, wants to use it, and then we've actually, uh, will start in August with the soccer team also, and then in, in September, in October, the latter part of September, we have a football team that shows up because of the likes. So, I mean, they're, they're being used constantly. Yeah, well, Commissioner Nedleton said would help if you?
We could do it just to hold harmless, when they come in and fill out the deal, sign up.
And we do have some kind of rules for the fair, for the fields, don't we?
I don't have, I don't have it. We, we'd actually gone through and did the rules for the fairgrounds, but we didn't do the rules for them.
I don't have a problem with this, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve it, as long as it doesn't interfere with what the, uh, the, the use of it for the, the children.
And, and we have, uh, like a Bay Booth team that's down there practicing, we've asked that the days that, that the Bay Booth goes to the Alcoa Field, if the kickball would go to the, one of the other fields, if it's not being used, just to make sure that everybody's accommodated.
I'll second the motion. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Uh, next, item 18, discuss possible action on lease agreement between National Mexican Festival and, and Rodeo Show, August the 7th, 2016.
Judge, they've been trying to bring this, uh, here to Del Rio for a couple of years, and we got a phone call like three months ago that they'd like to have it August 7th. Basically, what they'll have, they'll have a couple of cinders, they'll have some horses coming in, and I think a little bit of like, oh, it's not the other type deal, uh, so...
They're going to use concession and all that, or no?
Everything, huh? It's the, it's the full rate of $1,000 for one night.
A lot according to the, oh, here it is.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Motion to approve and have the county judge sign.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody?
And just, I didn't have any bills this morning, over.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, but you're, you're, you're writing a $10.00 deal for a $0.20 bolt.
All right, next, we have item 19, request for payment of Spartans Office, want a bill for the month of June, no purchase order was done prior. Uh-oh. Come on up, Judge.
We're in trouble now. Judge Commissioners, uh, this is a bill that we just received, and I had instructed my chief deputy clerk, Connie, to, to hold off on it, because I was monitoring that account and have been all year, and we got really extremely busy last, last month with a lot of court hearings and what have you, and I forgot to instruct the?
How much is the bill?
It's $20.
Do you have the money in your account?
Yes.
Do you have money, do you pay the $20?
About $50.
But you do have the $20.
Yes, we do.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve if you write a purchase request and go through the process.
Okay.
Very good.
There's a motion, a second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Nobody? Five zero.
Thank you.
All right, next, item 20, review of the Beverly County Library Expansion Project Budget. Go ahead.
Did we figure out what we had in furniture?
I, I had, I got that information. On the first line item, uh, it's actually Mr. Esser's line item, and he, I don't see him here still, uh, he wasn't due to be here, but, since he's running the grant on that, on that project, so I would request that that be moved.
He's been down with a blue, because I met with him, but he was.
Right.
Okay, so he might not be?
Well, he had all the information for that.
Well, it's, I guess, would it give me enough room to ask the question on the expansion? On the, what the dollar amount was on the furniture?
Yes, I have that, I have that information.
That's an item, the next item.
You want to table item 20 then? You want to table item twenty then?
All it was was a review of the budget.
No action?
No action. Okay. Thank you. All right, let's go to item twenty-one, discuss possible action regarding bid award for Valverde County Library Expansion Project Furniture, furnishing and equipment bid solicitations.
As I brought that up last month, uh, for the approval of the bid, you wanted, uh, wanted to know where, where we were on the-
Yeah, because you'd asked, we were gonna spend some money on furniture, we didn't know how much money we had.
I asked, um, Dewberry to provide me that information. They did. Uh, the total, uh, allowed or budgeted was six hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. And of that, we, on the first bid in April, we approved four hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two. There was a balance of a hundred and seventy-eight, three forty-eight. And this bid, um, that was submitted for section nine was a hundred and three thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, leaving a balance of seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars.
How much more? How much more furnishing and how mu- how much more we need to buy? Where are you looking at?
More than seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars.
Do you have an idea? Do you have any idea? So, like, what is-
There's, uh, section, there's section, uh, seven and section eight, I believe. And there, there were minimal, there were, both of them less than fifty thousand for sure.
But when you put both of them together, they're over seventy thousand?
No.
No?
No.
So how much?
I don't have that exact number, but it, it's, it was minimal. I believe that the estimated cost on, on section seven was twenty thousand and section eight was, uh, sixteen, estimated cost.
So we haven't-
Of course. Dewberry has that, yes.
Motion to approve. Does the motion?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody. Thank you. Next, discussing possible action regarding authorizing the use of purchasing a new credit card to be used on, for online and miscellaneous purchase.
The old one, the old per, the old credit card was suspended by the attorney's office due to the fact that an invoice did not arrive within the three days after the purchase was made. Which, um-
So do you want, so you cancel it?
So it was canceled, yes.
So you want another credit card?
So I need another credit card if y'all want me to buy anything for y'all.
Motion to approve. Second.
Has a motion is second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody. Five, zero. Item twenty-three, consider an act upon authorization for purchase department to request RFQs for architectural and engineering resident inspector and for testing services for DEAAG often defense control projects.
Uh, this was put on the agenda by Mr. Esser as well, and I really don't have any information on this.
What, uh, what?
Uh, yeah. Mr. Byd, I have some information.
Judge, I met with Mr. Esser and Frank Lowell last week, and this is an item that's of, of essence. Uh, we met with Alexandra Taylor in, in Austin, and we need to go out for RFQs to, to, uh, to have Mr. Es- uh, Ms. Willetts be a employee of the county. Right now, he's employed by the city.
Which jeopardizes our ability to get reimbursed from the state.
That is correct.
So any money expended up to this point, we probably will not get reimbursed.
I'm, 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 might.
Might.
Might get paid, might not. Why, why try, why even try to gather?
Just to add to Mr. Esser, wanted this to be done as quickly as possible before any more funds are being expended.
I'll make a motion to approve to go out for the RFQs and for them to be opened at our July twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a motion.
Second.
Second. Any questions?
I don't believe July twenty-seventh will give the correct amount of time to advertise.
According to Mr. Esser, I think it's gonna be ten days.
He's the one that wanted on the twenty-seventh. Okay, he's our check. The twenty-seventh, and the reason I said twenty-
You say the correct amount of time by who's, but who's, who's got the twenty-one day?
To advertise for the RFQ.
Is that our policy manual?
He mentioned ten days. What is the, is that true?
I don't remember. I'm not saying it doesn't.
He checked with the state department, that's why he came up.
I don't remember.
The reason, and the reason I, I checked into July twenty-seventh, because on July twenty-seventh, we're gonna have a budget, uh, workshop, a special meeting for that on a Wednesday. And so he wanted us to include that.
I understand. I, I got a question. When do we, we have a meeting, we have a deal in Austin. When's this thing in Austin?
Yeah.
August, end of August.
Twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-sixth.
Yeah, and according to the policy, my budget doesn't be presented to you guys before the thirtieth, so that's why we're doing it twenty-seventh. So he also wanted to include this item there.
Okay.
Okay.
You get into request for qualifications, not for proposals, so that's a big difference.
And that may be the difference.
Yeah. I think he was saying it was ten days, not-
Ten days for RFQs.
But could you check with that?
Yeah, I am.
You have a motion and a second, Judge?
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. Any other question? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody. Thank you. All right, let's go to item twenty-four, report on a train floodplain basis of West, for West Texas.
Thank you, Judge.
Uh, I was, uh, fortunate to be able to attend a, a floodplain basic for West Texas. Uh, this was held in, uh, the city of Fort Stockton. It was sponsored by the city of Fort Stockton. And, uh, it was a very, very informative, um, session. Actually, the, uh, the people that put this on, uh, is called the Texas Floodplain Management Association. And the, the good part about this particular seminar on, on floodplain management was it dealt with rural Texas. And, uh, it was, uh, very enlightening. Uh, our particular situation is, is such that, uh, we adopted model subdivision rules in nineteen ninety-six, which prohibit residential, uh, construction in the flood zone. But there's a lot of subdivisions that were platted prior to nineteen ninety-six, and they'll be governed by our flood damage prevention order, which was passed in two thousand and nine. Uh, the flood damage prevention order, of course, is, uh, enforced by this court, by the, uh, our department, and of course ultimately the county attorney's, uh, office for prosecution in the event of a violation. Uh, the, uh, focus is pretty much on Texas as far as FEMA is concerned because Texas leads the nation in natural disasters. And of course, that's pretty much understandable by the size of Texas, I guess, plus the fact that we've had a lot of flooding. This covers wildfires, flooding, tornado and et cetera. Therefore, FEMA, uh, Texas Emergency Management, and of course Texas Water Development Board, which is basically the administrative arm or branch of FEMA here in Texas, uh, is conducting, uh, these seminars to inform the counties of circumstances that could prevail if our flood damage prevention order was not enforced. Uh, the, uh, they cited several instances where counties had not enforced it. Uh, consequently, uh, they were either not eligible for flood mitigation grants or in some extreme cases, uh, their citizens were denied flood insurance. And, uh, of course, uh, in some cases both. But, uh, just wanted to, to make the court aware that our, our department is, is aggressive in following up on, on these issues. Uh, it's a matter of cooperation, uh, between the court, uh, our department and of course the county attorney's office. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you might have.
Mr. Esser, has FEMA changed the flood maps in the past five, ten years or?
No, sir. The flood map that we're dealing with was, was, uh, adopted in twenty-ten. That was the, uh, the most recent, uh, firm.
Not been any changes from that?
Yes. Flood information, uh, flood insurance rate map was twenty-ten. And, uh, that's the one we're, we're dealing with. Now, one, one thing that was, uh, they found very interesting about Valverde County, and of course, we think in terms of, uh, uh, floodplain management, a lot of times we think only of areas such as the San Flicky Creek area and maybe Vega Verde and Cinnegus. Uh, and, but it's entirely through the county. Uh, there was one interesting factor that, that was discussed that I brought out is the fact that, that we have the, of, the floodplain, we have the map that shows the one-hundred-year and the five-hundred-year floodplains. However, we also have, uh, maps in our office that were given to us by International Boundary and Water Commission, which, uh, in certain areas such as the Vega Verde area, your precinct commissioner, uh, those maps are based upon, uh, the rate of release. And, uh, it, in some cases, for example, in the last, uh, the flood of twenty-ten, the maximum release was a thousand cubic meters per second. And that actually exceeded the hundred-year floodplain. So it, I was advised, maybe to contact FEMA and, and advise them of this matter because this is a, was a unique situation as far as the, uh, situation concerned. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, the Valverde County's claim report for the month of June.
Yes, this, this is the last time, or the first and last time, but I, I will actually present this report in the future. It would be in, in your packet. Because of the nature of the report, if there's any specific questions, they should be referred to the county attorney's office. Uh, we've established a procedure where any claim, whether it be, uh, a, a mower that throws a rock and damages a, a little bit of paint or a wind, windshield, or, uh, a, a more serious claim against the county, uh, there'll be, that information will be shared directly with the county attorney's office at the same time before it's, when we receive it. So actually, uh, I have, any questions that you might have that specifics about this, I think should be addressed to the county attorney.
I've got a question of you, Roger. Uh, the hail storm that we had was on February twenty-second. And as far as I know, you have, yet still have not submitted the claims for my vehicles and damage to the vehicles, increasing one?
Commissioner, I'll, I'll direct, uh, I'll answer that directly to you. Uh, you came to me after the hailstorm and you said, "How come nobody checked my vehicles?" I said, "Well, we didn't have any report of any vehicles." It was maybe about two weeks later.
That report was submitted within the week, wasn't it?
One minute, please, sir. Let me respond. And, and so I, as I told you, I said, "We'll, we'll, we'll check them." And you said, "I'll get you a list." I said, "Fine." You gave me a list and we're in the process of getting adjusted down here. You came to my office, you sat in my office, overheard by my employees and told me, "Forget about it. Don't worry. There was a lot of old vehicles on there." I said, "Okay." I said, "I'm gonna keep the list." Last week, you called my office and you said, "Uh, what, well, how come nobody's gonna come and check my vehicles?" And I told you, I said, "You told me that there wasn't, there were a bunch of old vehicles," which basically the majority of them only do have liability insurance and no coverage. And we discussed that when you came to my office.
And that was the conversation, the liability?
One minute, let me respond.
Well, let me respond to you, Roger. The, uh, vehicle, the old vehicles, I did tell you, those we can't get anything for. But we have several new vehicles that have not been claimed on. My question is, when are they gonna get, uh-
In short, we have an adjustment be coming down this week.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Any other questions?
Okay, let's take a ten-minute break real quick. Could you sit down? Are you ready to? All right, to start.
Yeah.
All right, we need, we need to go back to item number twenty-three. Item, we need to go back to item twenty-three. Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, on this one, we need to create the, uh, selection committee, the scoring committee. I'll amend the original motion to make the committee to consist of Carl, Roy and the judges' administrative assistants.
Second accept. Okay. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody. Thank you. All right, now let's go to item twenty-six. Discuss the possible action regarding recommendation to enter, enter partnership with Better World Books.
Okay. Um, I have been talking to county librarians all over the state of Texas. Everybody's got a slightly different method for getting rid of their disc cards. Nobody sends them to government auction. So what I'm proposing, Better World Books, they provide the boxes, they pay for the shipping, and they send us a check that's likely to be a sufficient amount more than what we're getting at auction. Um, in the occasion, that they find a rare book, which does happen occasionally, they'll split it fifty-fifty with us. They do business with New York Public, Los Angeles Public, Harvard University, four thousand libraries. They donate or recycle whatever they can't sell. And I think that especially in light of the move we're getting ready to do, to have a streamlined process for getting rid of disc cards would be really beneficial. So, uh, it doesn't cost us anything. We can check in online and see what they're selling, how much we're making, and, and we'll get the occasional check, which will be nice.
Can we do it?
I have no idea.
Do you have some kind of description or something I can look at?
Uh, well, I've got this, I've got an entire printout of, uh, how they do this. But I mean, I do, I have talked to county librarians in the state of Texas that are working with them.
Have you discussed this with the friends of the library?
Um, not re, well, I mean, what I've discussed with the friends is that they're not really up to doing a book sale anymore, even if you work with go libraries. Uh, they don't, they just don't have the manpower. And so we don't, I don't think we have the five oh one three C designation to run the book sale ourselves. Um, and, and plus, I mean, space is an issue right now and paring things down is an issue. And we may have some rare books that'll bring in some money and they've got the expertise.
Why would you need a five oh one C three to sell the books yourself?
To sell the books? Well, I, I don't, I, I don't know about that. I mean, I do know some libraries have book sales of their own. But this is a way of moving it out, you know? You sell books within the community, you're also gonna have somebody come and say, "My great-grandfather donated this book in memory of my great-grandma. How can you throw it away?" You know, they all go to a good and greater cause as far as I can see. Nothing ends up in the landfill and, uh, so it's kind of a win-win.
I can tell you, like, when you go to govdeals.com or go to these places, these auction places, and the, the library has books, there's a bunch of books.
Yeah, well, I mean, the last auction, we had, I don't know, seventy-five boxes of books that sold for twenty-one dollars.
Five dollars, yeah. And when you look, I mean, it's like that. I mean, there has to be another, a better process.
This would be the same as GovDeals, the same setup we've got. It's just a matter of approving them as a, we still have to declare it surplus and then they can post it through them, like we did with GovDeals.
Yeah, but- And they're more specialized. I mean, GovDeals-
But they're an auction?
They're an auction house, right?
Well, I mean, they've, I, I don't, I'm not sure exactly what their marketing techniques are, but, um-
For that point, we don't have enough information.
If you can get us, get, get, uh, the county attorney's information.
Two hundred and twenty million dol, uh, million books were reused or recycled. They distributed, um, over half a million dollars in grants to libraries, so-
Can you get the information to the county attorney and let her review it and we can look at it?
Okay. Okay.
All right, let's go now to item twenty-seven, discuss possible action regarding friends of the library paying for the painting of the existing patio furniture.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody.
The folks don't wanna hear the details?
All right, next, item twenty-eight, discuss possible action regarding friends of the library reimbursing the library summer reading program expenses. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-seven, discuss possible action regarding Hyalum. Next, to replace Library Corporation TLC.
What is that?
Okay, um, TLC is the automated system that we use. This is our renewal with a bottom line of sixty-nine hundred dollars. They were hacked recently. Um, they did not inform us about the hack. After several weeks of us complaining about issues with our website, they finally came forward and, uh, told us about the hack, but not, we don't know what kind of information, um, was accessed. And, you know, we just had a lot of, of issues with them. Uh, the customer service has not been very, uh, good. I've got to-
What do they do for us?
Well, they're our automated system. It's the catalog, it's all the patron information, checkout. Um, I mean, it's all over our records with every, everything in the library, all the items that circulate. So Apollo Biblionics is, um, you can see here, they're quote twenty-five hundred dollars for the year with a one-time migration fee of twelve fifty.
How much were you paying for the other one?
Excuse me?
How much were you paying for that?
Sixty-nine fifty is the renewal rate.
Do we have a contract with the other company?
Um, it's just a year-of-the-year subscription.
When is the subscription?
It's coming up in the fall, but I'd like to go ahead and get an approval on this so that Biblionics can access our data, our metadata, and, um, when it's time to do the transition, it will go smoothly. Uh, Biblionics is used by forty percent of public libraries in Texas. Um, they were also, let's see, product of the year twenty-sixteen.
Graham, are you familiar with all of any of this?
Not, not with them. Uh, with TLC, they've been there several years.
No, but I mean the hack.
Yes.
Did it affect our system?
It's not a server that was included in the contract when they signed and, uh-
So they, it's their server?
It's their server, it's their website, it's their platform.
And this new company will provide all of their own stuff?
Well, Graham's been working out the details, but, um-
I believe the server that's been out belonged to the county. It was sold as part of the package, so-
So we would retain it? It would be ours?
We would retain the server and the data is supposed to be ours. We have had some problems with TLC, getting to cooperate with the database, but the data does belong to the county.
For sure.
Well, the data would almost have to be, it's ours. I mean, it's our books, our-
Not necessarily.
It's ours, it's, well, what they, the last thing they-
Depends on what the contract was.
As soon as we tell them we're leaving, we go into exit mode and they, they give it all, give us access. Yeah, they're making it difficult for us to access because obviously they don't want us to leave.
Yeah, but for one, we're sixty-nine hundred versus a couple of thousand.
Yeah, and even with some add-ons, um, that Apollo offers, um, it would still bring us under that six thousand dollars. They're also Texas-based Biblionics. I've worked with them before. They're family-owned, they're great customer service, and it's a very user-friendly interface.
Do you have the contract?
Don't, it's not a contract. I just have the, I just have this quote.
Has, has the attorney seen it?
Uh, no.
Looked at anything?
It's just a quote. There's, and I don't-
No, the contract for, uh, TLC.
Oh, that? Um, it's just a subscription, so it's an annual software license subscription.
Understand that, but it would be nice if they had it, be able to look at- I understand that, but it would be nice if they had it, be able to look at it to make sure we don't do something and we end up getting the same money we did.
Is that part of a purchase order, or how's that paid, Mr. Lucchino?
First time I hear TLC.
Somebody's paying it.
We've been paying it, we've been paying it.
That TLC and the server were purchased when Huma was still there, and I won't say it was when, not, uh, not Robin Flory, but the one previous to that.
Can you speak?
It was, it was actually renewed.
So was, is there a contact, do you know?
I think there is a contact.
I'll dig it up.
If you could, so we can find out.
The auditor's office might have a contact.
I don't have a problem moving it, it saves us money, but you need to make sure we're not...
It saves us money, and it would, and it would run more efficiently.
When, when is it up?
Um, the renewal is for September or October first, um...
Okay, so we have time.
So if we made it in August, it would be okay?
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to get the ball moving.
All right.
All right, next, item thirty, discuss possible action regarding Cybrarian?
Cybrarian, Cybrarian it's called, yeah.
To provide time management and print management?
Right, now, Cybrarian is, um, gonna do two things for us. You can see here, we get the small library discount of three thousand forty-five dollars, so that the bottom line for the first year would be twelve sixty-nine. They're gonna do print management, which is currently done by Ben Print, um, which is kind of going out of business. We can't get any customer support, I've heard other people say the same thing about them. We've had problems with the printers, print jobs not coming out, they go to the wrong printer. Um, and we can't get any, we can't get any response from them. The other thing, and the other thing we have is the time management software, which is something that we purchased, it's old and outdated, um, so this would knock out two birds with one stone.
So the fee of, so the fee of twelve hundred dollars, what are we paying right now for that?
Um, well, right now, I'm, I'm not really sure about Ben Print, um, I would have to look for that invoice, the, um...
I mean, 'cause if we're, if we're approving this, we don't know what it was costing you, so is it gonna cost you more money to do this versus...
Well, I mean, this may be, um, this may be a bigger investment than what we have in it right now because the time management, which is a separate thing, is something that we purchased. And it's a little old and outdated, you know, since we purchased it, there's no updates coming with it. So this would be time management and...
I understand, but I mean, what's it gonna...
What are they managing in time, what are they doing in time?
Um, it's gonna let people know that their time on the computer is almost up, um, if you, um, you know...
Is this not something we can do in-house?
Not with what we currently have.
Graham?
There's two parts to that. The print management software is completely overused, it needs to be replaced. The, the patrons print, and it's held in a queue before it's out, 'cause they have to go deposit change, then it goes to the printer. That company went from a really good downside to give the owner, and has nothing but problems, so that does need to be replaced. The print man, the, uh, the time management manages the patrons on how much time they can spend using a computer. TLM is involved. Personally, I've never had any problems with it. When we have to renew or increase the licenses, because it's a county library, it goes like six dollars a license, extremely cheap. It is a little over, antiquated compared to what she's looking at, but it serves a purpose. Uh, it's not digital, it's, if a patron expires, uses a very many of usage, all he does is go back to the front desk, give another license.
For a paper ticket, yeah.
Yeah, so that's...
So we charging for that?
Um, no, but, but what this will allow is the person to scan their library card, and a little slip of paper will give them their PIN so that we don't have staff spending time printing those out, handing them out. And we're getting ready to move into what's gonna look like a twenty-first century library, and I just would like to...
I understand, I'm just trying to figure, I'm just trying to figure out if, if there's things here that we can not spend money on, since we have an IT department that we can handle there, or, or that he's familiar with what all these systems are, so they don't, they work the way they're supposed to work.
The, uh, the print management doesn't, they look at, as far as comparison, I have not been involved in comparison, different vendors or companies.
Miss Monday?
Time management?
Right, I'm sorry.
The time management, it, it's not a world-class system, I mean, it isn't working out. I don't know what the comparison would be between TLM and what she's looking at, I have not seen it.
It would really help if you'd give us this information ahead of time.
Well, I'm starting, I'm starting on it now, because I'd like to get this stuff done by fall.
Right, well, you're asking for approval, and we have not seen the information, our county attorney has not seen the information.
Okay, well, next time I bring it to you, you'll be familiar with it.
Well, uh, yeah, 'cause right now, we, we haven't seen it, our attorney hasn't seen it, we...
I just, I don't like us doing anything with IT unless he knows what it is and he says it's gonna work.
Okay, well, I mean, Graham's been talking with Apollo, Apollo has told me that they are completely compatible with Cybrarian.
And, and it may all be, I just, I don't know, and...
I've done a lot of, I've done a lot of research, um...
When it comes to computer stuff, I'm gonna ask him, and, and this is a lot, I'm, I'm assuming you have money in your budget to cover these things?
Well, we will come fall, and, and I think that it's gonna be more expeditious, it's, it's gonna be more expeditious spending than, than what I've walked into, so...
Something to compare to, if it's told something, what was it costing us before? That's what, you know, and I can understand if this is gonna cost us more 'cause it's gonna bring us, you know, we're sitting here in the past type deal.
That's one thing, yeah, yeah.
But what's it, what's the difference?
But if we're buying stuff, I mean, isn't part of the library bond gonna cover some of these purchases for some of this stuff?
Well, I mean, it's, if you look at what our regular budget, um, includes for computer maintenance, uh, and, um, yeah, I think it would be the computer maintenance account.
He just said furnishings, I don't know how much anyway we would have with furnishing, there's, there's money left in there.
But I mean, this is, if, if we don't pay TLC sixty-nine hundred dollars, and we pay Apollo Biblionics...
Couple thousand.
Three thousand, then...
I like the couple thousand.
Then this is paid for, you know?
Let's make a motion for table, uh, and, uh, that it not be brought back to court until IT and county attorney's office become involved and approve of this.
Okay, the motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nobody, thank you. All right, item thirty-one, discuss possible action regarding bench, which sits in the front, and quite certainly the front of the library.
That, that's the bench, it, you can see, it, it sits pretty cattywacko, it's really, uh...
Cattywacko.
I've heard that in a long time, I like that word.
So, um, I'm just thinking maybe it's time for it to come down.
You should call building maintenance.
We'll take it down, I mean, that's what you want.
Absolutely.
That's what you want.
I mean, yeah, I, you know, my staff has worked really hard at cleaning up the patio space, um, we've done landscaping, we took some benches down there that were rotten and falling apart and dangerous, so...
Well, if we're gonna take down the benches, probably need to take the stump, a lot of the stump down too, no?
Well, maybe so. If you see the statue that had the broken head has been removed from the top of the fountain, and we now have a nice plant sitting there, so... I just don't have the manpower for that bench, so I need somebody else to take that on.
I didn't, I don't remember seeing a work order, did you do a work order?
No, I saw the bench was falling apart one day, and I said, "That's dangerous."
Okay, well, just do a work order, and we'll take care of it.
Okay, all right.
Next, item thirty-two, discuss possible action regarding library closure for construction.
Well, that's just, uh, I would like to be able to put all my staff's concerns to rest. The last I spoke with Mr. Sanchez last week, he said it was possibly just gonna be a few days of, of the library being closed, but I've heard talk as much as two weeks, and so, um, I just wanna know what I can tell people as far as, you know, they can expect to get paid.
Judge, when we first approved the plans for the library, the, they were designed in such a way to where there would be no closure of the library, and, uh, I believe we need to get with Mr. Esser and, and find out why she may be getting, is being told that, that we're gonna have to close. The, the idea was that we will, we would not have to close 'cause there were gonna structure that, construction in a way to where we could keep it open.
Yeah, there may be a section that would have to close for a little while, but the entire library was never supposed to be closed.
Okay, well, I mean, even if it, even if it has to be closed to the public for some days, as long as my staff can still go in there and work.
There is a meeting Wednesday at noon for an update, the monthly meeting.
Okay.
And that would be a good time for you to address your concerns through Mr. Esser and Mr. Sanchez.
And that will be at the library?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll put it on my calendar. All right, thanks very much.
Okay, item thirty-three, request consideration for one additional new hire.
I'm like, that's part of the budget.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's part of our budget, we're gonna discuss it on July twenty-seventh. Okay?
You want copies of, of, of...
No, we've got...
We've got it. Thank you. All right, next, discuss possible action on approval of reimbursement for travel and per diem to Charles D. E., Assistant District Attorney for, for, from, uh, from DTU.
This needs to go through Carl, we hired him to handle our grants.
Right.
He needs to be with us, and then send us whatever we need.
Judge, and, uh, if you will, ask him why, um, this was a, a conference in Austin, and he's requesting mileage paid every day, and it was a week conference, so...
He's staying in his head.
I don't believe he was coming home and going back every day, and there is a request, um...
Yeah, that's why, that's why Mr. Esser has to review it.
Right, because that's one thirty-two fifty every day.
Right.
I don't think that should be right.
All right. All right, next, item thirty-five, monthly treasury report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Any questions?
Our, um, gas seems to be dwindling, we're down to two point seven.
Yes, sir.
That's a big expenditure.
We have some pretty big expenditures, and we're spending money. We gotta, I think we gotta, we're at a point that we need to slow down on some of our expenditures, and we might blow everything.
Aaron?
Yes, sir.
Under detail, the very first one that, back in trust was Texan. We have a beginning balance of thirty-five hundred, thirty-five, three million five hundred thousand, and then you show total debit of, um, four million six hundred thousand, total credits of five million five hundred thousand, but yet ending balance of two million six hundred thousand. Do you have your debits and your credits reversed? 'Cause that same goes down on, on the others.
Frank explained it before, it's, it's, where we normally are used to credit debit, it's actually opposite when it's gonna come into the system. What we're normally doing with our personal banking account, we, we're used to seeing a debit and credit is actually different on this accounting system. But the numbers are correct as far as what we deposit and what comes out.
Why do we have so much money in our interest to save people? Have we not made our payment to, to, as in our bond yet, or what?
Uh, I don't think we made that payment yet, uh, it hasn't come from the auditor to make that payment. You'll notice that we still have an interest in sinking CD of base twenty-five.
Uh-huh.
There's actually, you'll notice that there's a new interest in sinking bank trust money market account. That's actually supposedly two hundred and six thousand, uh, we didn't get to report it on time. I'd asked the county auditor to open up the new ledger account, he failed to put the amount in there, so we just reported it as still being under the CD.
Get the existing money out of the CD and roll it into a money market?
Yeah, uh, we're giving it one point better than we were on that CD, that particular CD. We actually have another CD coming up at the end of July that we're gonna also roll into that as well.
To the money market.
We, we kinda came into an issue where all four CDs were put in one ledger account, when they should've really been four sub-accounts, so we're, we're gonna get that fixed or tied as well.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
But, real, real quick.
Mm-hmm.
We pay down, uh, three point some odd million dollars, right?
Uh, I don't recall speeding, but...
Tell them, okay.
You're talking about out of interest sinking or...
Oh, I know, it's department, never mind, okay.
Aaron?
Yes, sir.
On the, uh, ending balance for the funds for the month of June, on the third item down for the Texas Assessor Collector, you show a balance of, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars?
Seven twenty-three.
Yes, sir. What is that, are those taxes collected?
So it should be the taxes collected.
And where are they still in her account and not transferred to the general account?
Um, I couldn't say, I, I don't have a definite answer right now. Usually, the auditor will advise us to make a transfer of some sort. Um, I can get back to my office and give you an answer.
Because of, the, that account, the one right below it for the Texas Assessor Collector, that's well over a million dollars that she's got. That would show our, our line to be healthier.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I don't have a definite answer right now, it could be the way the month finished, uh, I'd have to get back to my office and look at all that, really, accounting stuff. But I can get you an answer.
It's still a bit, I'm starting on the first night.
I can get you an answer today?
We, we, uh, we've already, we received our three point some odd million from the, from the state, 'cause it looks like that's what's, what that number there is, beyond the loop. But we'd already made an interest payment, I think, of six hundred and some odd thousand dollars, so our payment's still gonna be less than, or right around the three million, and we still have four million.
One million.
Four million after the payment would come out, really four million, a couple hundred thousand. Uh, are we gonna get in our financial advisor at some point in here? Because I mean, it, it, it's too much money to have in this account, not being used.
That, that's what we're gonna be doing on the July twenty-seventh. There's also some, it's actually just that, some individual accounts that, that very healthy. Amount of money, a couple of them have over half a million dollars, and we need to look at that also.
So he's gonna come in, Judge?
Yeah, he's coming in. The, the reason we're having it that time is just Frank's gonna be off for the next two weeks. At the same time, uh, we're trying to get the new auditor to start working with Frank, so he needs a little bit of time to work with.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nobody, four zero. All right, next, we have discuss possible action on health insurance for U. of. Texas Association of Counties. Uh, what do you think? I think Mr. Ford is here from the tax conference.
He, he's gonna address the extension, uh, discussion. The, the auditor forwarded the contract, forwarding you on the Blue Cross and Blue Shield, um, health coverage for employees, and our premiums did decrease. The average rate increase for the whole pool is two percent. Uh, the county health plan receives a negative seven percent rate change, and the county dental plan receives a negative one point five percent rate change. No changes are made to the life insurance rate. There is a surplus distribution check for twenty fifteen that we will receive at the end of the month for a hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the county...
Where does that go?
It's going to Genofun.
I think the county's done excellent, um, our employees, you know, and we use the services that we have to attack, especially when it comes to, um, medical prescriptions and such, which, it really makes a difference, um...
There was a good, uh, drop in cost for, for the employees.
Uh, if you look at our numbers, we were paying four hundred and ninety-two eighty, and it did go down to four fifty-five ninety-six for employee only, and it goes down to address employees, uh, plus children, from six ninety-one ninety-six to six forty-three fifty-two, employee and children, seven eighty-seven eighty-six to seven thirty-two seventy, employees' spouse, one thousand sixteen one thirty-six to nine eighty-seven oh six, and then we have employee and family, twelve hundred and twenty-four twenty-four to eleven thirty-eight fifty-four.
Was that statewide, Ron?
Sir, I do HR.
Oh, you do HR, I understand.
Ernesto wasn't able to be here for the presentation.
Okay, okay.
Um, this will take effect, um, October one.
Much to me again, are we getting back?
We are getting back, a hundred and sixty-five three hundred and seventy.
Oh, the reason I bring it up is that we're looking at this airlife deal and all that.
And that, that airlife is, is gonna propose a new budget to...
But we haven't got an agreement?
No, they're supposed to bring it back to us, uh, they wanna bring it back to us, I think, before August, so they might end up coming back.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, if we're gonna get this check, this would be a good start. I guess that that money has tried for it, yeah.
Motion to authorize renewal?
Okay.
There's a motion, a second. Any other questions? And all those in... And all those in favor, Nicky Bessinai?
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody?
Do we sign a contract with this or not?
For the Blue Cross? Yes, ma'am, um, I think the judge has the original, and he'll initial by... The health, the dental, the life policy, and then we send them back.
You need to move them and you don't sign them.
No, we, we send them.
We did, we need authority to sign them.
Okay.
You wanna?
Oh, the second, it's a, it's a society.
I'll, I'll, uh, but, we've already acted on that one, people are moving.
Yeah, if, if, then Tent is already, I mean, he's the one supposed to sign anyway, but it's not mentioned, it doesn't need to be mentioned.
Okay.
Second, it's...
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor, Nicky Bessinai?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody, five zero. All right, you got my glasses, do you want them? All right. And next, we have the, I think thirty-seven thirty, I should be together, the same item, uh, H.R. monthly report to personal matters.
On the monthly report, there, everything is consistent with our, um, base bank and such.
But this isn't that, uh, this is H.R. monthly report.
I think they...
Oh, this is on the exempt ones.
Okay. Yeah, this is for the exempt policy, if you have a question.
Mr. Ford is here...
Mr. Ford is here to present, uh, on the non-exempt, with, with the great issue that we are about to face.
So we're on pretty good. Yeah. Don't need another table to put all that paperwork on, or?
Give us a short version.
Judges and commissioners, my name's Raleigh Ford, I'm of Texas State, Dixon Counties. I've done a lot of training in this room, and, uh, I do H.R. training for, for TAC. It's part of your public potential liability coverage, and for me to come and do the training or come visit you today costs no money, no additional money, it's all included in the premium. What you have in front of you is a copy of slides that was in a webinar that we had last week. We had, uh, what, a hundred and eighty-some people, I think, across the state participate in this. What has happened is, the president, uh, has ordered the Department of Labor to look and review what is classified as exempt and non-exempt. These rules will take place December first. And if you will go, and I can go into as much detail as, as you feel comfortable, if you will go to, uh, page five, look at the top salary, what has happened is, if you, exempt means you're paid a salary, non-exempt means you're hourly. So if you're paid a salary, the minimum salary level test is twenty-three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, that's as of today. As of December first, the president has raised it to forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. If you make less than, I'm gonna speak in future now, after December first, if you make less than that forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars, you now become an hourly worker, which makes you non-exempt, which means you will turn in your time sheets. If you don't work, you don't get paid, if you work, you get paid. An exempt employee is K. to P. divided by twenty-six pay periods. So, I always use twenty-six thousand dollars, it's just easier for the math from my brain. So if you're making twenty-six thousand dollars a year, you're exempt, regardless of how many or how little hours you put in, you're gonna make a thousand dollars per pay period. You're paid to do the job, not for the hours worked. If that person, uh, after December first stays at twenty-six thousand dollars a year, that person now becomes an hourly employee. And any work that they do over forty hours, then would either be overtime, and it's either paid or comp.
It's comp.
All right? They can earn up to two hundred and forty hours of comp, after two hundred and forty hours of comp, then they need to be paid at time and a half, and they earn the, the comp time at time and a half. That is a total, and that never goes away. So for the first year, maybe they put in two hundred and forty hours or whatever, and it doesn't, it appears that doesn't cost the county. The next year, they put in two hundred and forty hours, you're gonna be paying them, uh, for that, and the equivalent at time and a half. So, what you wanna do is, let's look over at the twelve-one, if we have some employees that, let's say they're making forty thousand, forty-four thousand, is it cheaper to make them go hourly, and then the overtime, they are paid? Or is it more, is it cheaper for the county to just bump them up to, say, forty-seven five, and now they are, they do not qualify for, for, uh, overtime? What has changed is this top slide. The duties test, salaries test, nothing else has changed, just this has changed. If we have, I'll mention this, I don't think we do, if you have a highly compensated employee that is making a hundred thousand dollars a year, that would go over to slide, um, ten, at the top. In order for them to stay highly compensated, then they would need to make one hundred and thirty-four thousand and four dollars. I don't know where the four dollars came from, but there is four dollars there, all right? This, some counties, they may have, uh, medical personnel, they may have, uh, some of our larger counties, Bayard County, I don't know if Tom Green would have anything, trying to think of people. I'm sure Harris County probably does, Karen Dallas County may have those. So for the smaller counties, you probably don't have any ones highly compensated, but I'll bring that up. So those are the changes. What is happening now is a lot of counties now are looking at, well, who's exempt, who's non-exempt? And so if some people are in the exempt category, you may, it'd be, uh, better to put them back in the non-exempt. You, as a commissioner's court, you can't dictate somebody is exempt or non-exempt. There are tests that have to be, uh, made by the Department of Labor. There's the salary test, there's the duties test, um, and I have some of these, uh, these two. Make sure, yeah, hand that one out.
I already did.
Oh, you did? Actually, you look at...
Actually, these are the same thing that you've been going over for the last two months or three months, but I mean, right?
So I...
This is the same stuff that you've been looking at with attorney's office and going back and forth on, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm happy that you have this. I, what I've done is I've gone through all the regs and put it as simply as possible, what, what is an exempt employee and what is a non-exempt? That's good that, uh, Juanita has done these. I have, uh, I'll give them to Juanita, uh, the final rule, what did change? Here it is, it's from the Department of Labor, and then we have some question and answers for nonprofits. Can I entertain any of your questions?
I mean, I think she's been visiting with you, right?
Yes.
I mean, I've been going over this, what, all this year at least, right?
I think the, the concern that we have in the court, when, when I provided this to the commissioners and the judge and the attorney, is the one that I've highlighted in the column, are classified as exempt, but they do, they are gonna fall below the threshold. And I think the court needs to make a decision, if we are gonna keep them exempt, do we raise those salaries? And that is what it's gonna cost the county.
But we have a budget meeting on the twenty-seventh that we could actually address that on.
Okay.
Go over the, go over the, the comp time deal again, you said that you can do up to two hundred and forty hours.
And law enforcement can go to forty.
Okay, but then you said something about if they do two hundred and forty the second year, does that mean if they're carrying over more than two hundred and forty, you have to pay?
That's the grand total, yes. Once you hit two forty...
But, but if they take it off without, by the end of the year, and they start the next year, they're fine.
Right. You know, they go up and down, as long as it doesn't go to two forty.
We had a deal with, uh, Gondolario when we switched from, uh, from Morris over to, uh, to Frank. He basically took off for two months. We, we had to get him down.
Mine down, yeah.
Bring him down.
Um, what about the administrative assistant, that's not on the list?
And that's one that, uh, TAC and I have been talking about. Normally, all administrative assistants are classified as non-exempt employees. Uh, I reached out to other counties, and I think the response I got were from about eleven counties, and they're non-exempt employees.
See, but my administrative assistant supervises, um, does all these things, that she has management, she has input, all those things.
I don't make the decision.
You're gonna pay her overtime.
She doesn't qualify for overtime.
But what I'm asking, is it the job title we look at, or the job duties?
Duties.
Okay, so her duties are within the...
She passed the test.
Yes.
Yeah, she passes the test.
Yeah, and that's, that's the argument I've been making, and the answer's always, but the administrative assistant is not exempt, but...
But he just told us, there, there's test, one salary, then, then you've got A, B, C, if, if they pass all the tests.
Salary basis, and then the duties test, and it's in the duties test that, um, um, she would probably fail. To be exempt.
No, mine wouldn't, because she has management, duties, and...
And, I cannot tell you someone is or someone isn't. I can give you the duties test, you can, and, and you can make the assessment, they are or are not. Now, let me just take the scenario out. Let's say we have somebody, and we said, you're, you are exempt, we are taking away their ability to be paid overtime. If they go and they find out, they go to an attorney or whatever, no, they really aren't non-exempt, they're hourly, and they put in all of these hours, when they go to resign, they can turn it in and say, here's what you owe me for my overtime.
But what happens if you go through it, go item per item, and they do pass the test?
Then they're exempt.
Okay.
Now, on the flip side, if somebody is exempt, and we pay them non-exempt, there's no penalty to that. But if you make them exempt, then there is the, the risk, what if somebody's made exempt? Cause we see it as a promotion, but we've denied them the ability to earn overtime.
But you're giving us a list of what they must pass, they must be, they must do this, 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 and this, if they pass them all, and they have those duties.
Then you all make this, make the determination whether they're exempt or not.
Are those duties clarified in their job?
Right now, the county has five, uh, administrative assistants, and when I went through the system under the Tyler, there is one that is a non-exempt employee because she is earning, um, comp time. And then, of course, we have the library where she's requesting her to be changed to be a non-exempt employee because of the work. She doesn't have the, the supervision or a lot of the decisions, but...
But that's something that y'all are gonna have to look at and make sure that each individual passes those tests.
And that's exactly my point.
And that's something that y'all have been going back and forth with.
Basically, the answer to my question is, because her title is administrative assistant, she has to be non-exempt. But my argument is that it's just a title.
Yeah.
And she has different responsibilities to...
She qualifies either as an executive exempt or administrative exempt, and those, there's different tests.
And we have all that stuff?
Yes, sir.
And we can, we make sure we verify those job descriptions, meet all of those.
And then we'll sit down with each department.
And that the employee understands all of that.
Well, you, uh, mentioned that the court really cannot designate exempt and non-exempt, other than what falls under the law. We, we cannot create our own rules on who's a can, who's not.
We just have to follow the Department of Labor guidelines.
Okay, our, our function would be just to accept what, what the H.R. brings us.
No, no, you're misinterpreting me, or maybe I didn't make myself clear.
Okay.
The Department of Labor, in its infinite wisdom, has said, these are the requirements.
Yes.
All right? If we say, Raleigh Ford, you're a street sweeper, we're gonna make you exempt, cause you decide what streets and whatever, then that, you've misapplied the duties test to me, and, and you could, you can do that, you get to make that decision. But you can't say, because of your job, you are exempt regardless of what the Department of Labor stands. They, they set the standards, and then you either, um, accept that position as having met those standards or not, and that, that's your role. But to simply say, no, we want him to be exempt, we don't want him to, or her to earn overtime, um, the, the, the risk is, maybe the Department of Labor standards aren't even met.
And that is what I said, we, we cannot, because...
Cannot change the standards?
Exactly, so, again, Juanita Conso is saying, these are the people that qualify under the standards to be exempt, then the court will take action, et cetera.
Yeah, and I think, here lately, I mean, y'all have been working real close with the attorney's office, I mean, y'all have been emailing each other trying to figure out...
Yeah, but we have a different, we have differences of opinion, and that's why we're...
But, but right now, I mean, that was pretty much clarified, I mean, there, there are certain points that we must meet. If, if they, instead of going by position, but go by the test, by the point, if they meet them, then we should be okay.
And in my case, my employee does not want to be non-exempt, and y'all don't want her to be non-exempt, please?
No. No.
Thank you.
All right.
And we're gonna have to do a better job with the ones that were exempt, now non-exempt, to figure out who's gonna keep track of their hours.
This isn't, this isn't just a matter of salary, there's, there's another piece to this. It's not just a matter of raising everybody's salary to this and saying, poof, we're done, there are some other parts that we have to comply with, too.
Yeah.
Well, with the fact that either you're exempt or non-exempt, uh, the court needs to make that decision, and...
Yeah, but it wouldn't be our decision to make.
Well, no.
We, you just presented it to us, I mean, we're, we're being told, the only way they can be exempt is because of X, 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 right now.
That's right, that's right.
And we have job descriptions for everybody?
Yes, sir, and, uh, I've been getting, uh, as previously requested by the court, I've talked to the department heads, I've been getting the forms where they're okay with their job descriptions, and I'm gonna make a presentation to the court.
So are the ones that are, that you're relying on right now, are all those job descriptions approved by the court?
Um, I, yes.
The ones that you're relying on?
No, no, the, the majority of them, I've received the acknowledgement saying this is how the job description is in my department, and I'm gonna present them to the court.
Yeah, the ones that you're relying on, like, when you look at a job description...
Are they exempt or non-exempt?
For anything, the job description that you rely on, has that been approved by the court?
No.
Every one of them?
No.
But you're gonna bring them to us?
Yes, sir.
And next, we have the, uh, missed up personal matter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, second, all those in favor, Nicky Bessinai?
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody? All right, now, this, but, the auditor is off for the next two weeks, so anybody have a question, Aaron? Have some questions, uh, and, so Matt, he's got the material in case you have questions.
I've, I've been asked by Mr. Lowe to discuss number forty-one.
Yeah.
Number forty, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, need a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, Nicky Bessinai? Aye, all those opposed?
No, I, I love your, yes.
Yes. All right, next item, uh, forty-one, discuss possible action on twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget amendments.
We have two, uh, budget account transfers, one from the Health Department, wishing to transfer three thousand to his office supplies. Two thousand coming from a travel and training, and one thousand coming from postage, he has plenty of money in both of those.
Is that the only one?
No, the second one is from the Treasurers Department, transferring fifteen hundred to travel and training from, coming from office supplies.
Are those the only two?
Those are the only two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, okay, all those in favor, Nicky Bessinai?
Aye.
All those opposed, nobody? Connor, do you have a, any... Okay, and I've only executed, uh, session, uh, pursuant to the Texas government call five five one point zero seven one, parenthesis one, parenthesis A, and five five one point zero seven one, parenthesis two, and five five one point zero seven two. Okay, time is now eleven twelve, we'll come back in session. Any, any motions?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we authorize the judge to, uh, sign and, uh, authorize the payment of the lease for the I.T. department.
Second. Second.
If you could add, that thousand dollars, the surplus that there was already a quarter left.
That's to be different, different motion, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
Second, second.
Okay, all those in favor, indicate by say aye. Aye, a little opposed, nobody? Thank you. All right, let's put off, any sub...
Yes, subversion, yes.
I'd like to mention, thank you, Judge, Commissioner, currently, there's several people, I have two here, and there's more in the mail, where people are combining lots. Apparently, there's some advantage to that, as far as the types of structures concerned, so there'll be more of these in the future. The first one I have is a, is a plaque of Wolf.
That's a subversion, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second, second, all those in favor, indicate by say aye. Aye.
Okay, this is in Commissioner Owens. I think this is the one that I emailed to you, Commissioner, this is David Breeden.
Okay, that's where his house is at. He's just trying to put it together?
Yeah.
Now you can say it's blurry. And it meets everything, but...
Yes, it does, yeah.
I mean, all he's doing is just putting it together.
He's providing, providing both lots, yes.
Motion to approve. Second, all those in favor, indicate by say aye. Aye, a little opposed, nobody?
You know, I'm going to, real quick, one of the things that the county has, that I think we're doing better than the city, when we do these plaques, we have, like the Amistad zoning, if Amistad zoning doesn't have a quorum, it, you can still bring it to the court, that way the people are not stuck. The problem that we're having at the city right now is that they have a, they have a utility commission, they have a planning and zoning, and they have all these, but the ultimate goal is for the city council to approve it. But yet, if they don't have quorums, utility or whatever, it just, it never gets to city council, to which I, I really do think whoever came up with Amistad zoning rules and actually presented it, that there's a way that if there's not a quorum, it still moves forward without the developer or an individual, just wait...
Being penalized because they're with the quorum.
I mean, that's, I just needed to say that, because I think we're having issues with the city right now. Just throwing that out there.
Commissioner Ford's issues, uh, you're presenting.
Everybody got one of them.
And this, once again, is a combination of these lots, these are of Dallas's lots, where what's actually occurring here, for some reason, the Prezole District has always had this as Lot A, so we're renaming this lot as Lot A versus Lot Forty-One, which the flat showed, but the Prezole District holds firm, though this is Lot A. So it's renaming that lot and combining these two lots.
Texting each other?
Oh, yes, it sure does. Here, this is, this is open.
Yeah.
Motion to approve. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor, indicate by say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay.
Hello there.
Any executive compliance?
No, sir.
Okay. Any monthly, proven monthly reports?
Motion to approve.
Second, second, all those in favor?
Question, or comment, Judge, first of all, let the record show that there was no JP two report, we have yet to get a report from him, I was talking about it, but he hasn't included, and there was no commentary before either.
Okay. Okay. No, I did send them a memo, and I think you got a copy of the memo, what I wanted to report before, and find it before, so. Okay, there's a motion, second, all those in favor, indicate by say aye. Aye, a little opposed, nobody? Forty-six, two, same bills?
I'll make a motion to approve, I'd like to add, this is one that Frank sent back to me, there was a shipping charge of twenty-three dollars and eighty-five cents, it was not part of the original purchase order when we made it, so it was off by twenty-three dollars and eighty-five cents, so I'd like to make a motion to add this as part of the bills and approve it. It is M and D.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion, and can we add that thousand dollars to this to the surplus?
Oh, yeah, a motion, or add the thousand.
Okay, there's a motion?
The surplus, that's true.
Second?
Second.
Surplus, that's true. I'm just going to convert.
I've got questions, just...
Go ahead.
First of all, do we, have we made any progress on the copyrights, what are we doing? Have they come up? They've got a bunch of them, they've paid a lot of the bills for copyrights, so we're working on it.
I haven't added any, the only one was, is the, the one I brought up last month, the commissioner does it.
Okay.
No decision ever made.
Okay, there's a fee of a hundred and seventy dollars for the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for onsite fees, do we know what that is?
What is it?
I don't know. A hundred and seventy dollars, onsite fees, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. June, June the thirtieth is the posted date.
That was a, that was a license for you, for one of my employees.
Okay. And then, Judge, there's a, under capital expenditures, Constable Precinct Three has twelve invoices, their posted date is shown as February twenty-third, but it says, capital expenditures, it's over four thousand dollars for radio equipment. He does not have that in his budget, do we know where that money came from?
It would have had to come out of the capital outlay that we set aside, the capital budget, which is not part of the individual budgets.
I understand that, but capital outlay, we did it that way, so it would come to court every time they were going to buy something.
It did come to court, it did come to court.
And they've been ongoing, the wrong one came in, we had to send it back, and...
That's why there's so many?
Yeah, there's so many, yes. I don't know where he actually...
Yeah, it was for...
Yeah, he did come to court.
Yeah, he came to court and got approval.
Okay.
Judge, I've got two invoices that I need to present. There's one from Vulcan Materials, we did have a purchase order, but the amount, there was a difference, and I'd like for this invoice to get paid.
How much? How much was the difference?
Well, the purchase order we did was for seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars, and the amount of the invoice is seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven, and sixty-two cents.
Just whatever the difference was on that field, huh?
Yeah. And then I've got another one from Sears on AC unit, the purchase order that we did was for three ninety-eight, ninety-nine, and the total amount from the invoice is four forty-nine, ninety-nine.
Motion accepts.
Motion accepts.
I didn't have any.
Again, these are things that, with a phone call, that could have been taken care of.
Yeah. And we went through that speech a little while ago, I mean, as much as we planned, there's always stuff that's going to be over, and up until about six months ago, this started happening, and before, we would get the phone call, and we could take care of it, I don't know what happened.
Okay, there's a motion, second, all those in favor, indicate by say aye. Aye, a little opposed, nobody, five zero, no comments from the executive officials?
Judge, that's just about enough.
Come on, Sharon.
He's trying to leave, man. No, just, just real quick, the school district and the police department, Sheriff's Office is going through some active shooter training at the seventh and eighth grade campus this week, and a lineup that took place in the Dallas area, but we're inviting all our elected officials to tomorrow, at, tomorrow afternoon, they're going to go through the practical, on how they, how they, how they've trained, prepared so far, so I'd like to invite you all to show up there.
Tomorrow, what time?
Tomorrow, about one o'clock.
Correct.
At the seventh and eighth grade campus.
Okay.
And it'll be tomorrow, one o'clock, actually, we're putting anywhere from fifty to sixty long portion officers through this combination, city, school, and county.
I want to commend y'all on that.
Sir?
I want to commend y'all on that, that's awesome.
So, just to invite you all, y'all to make it a, so no accidents or injuries take place, you probably get searched, go in hand, to make sure that there's no weapons on anybody, because it'll be a, a good exercise, and y'all can, y'all can participate if you'd like to.
I'm going to choose, right?
Why don't we all say?
Yes, sir, I have a comment, how much time do we have? I just want to wish you safe and enjoyable vacations, thank you, thank you. How do you have it? If not...
Quickly say it.
You're adjourned.
Get my friends out of here all day.